At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Amy, would you like to lead us into?
I definitely thought that God, we come to you this evening, Lord, thanking you, Lord, for another week that you've given us, Lord, and God, we thank you, Lord, for taking over our children and our staff, God, and we call upon you again, Lord, just to keep us safe and keep us healthy, Lord, and I pray, God, that you just guide our teachers and staff, Lord, as we try to do this. We thank you again for all you do for us, and we pray that you be with us through this meeting. You're precious thing we do pray. Amen.
Okay, moving on to item number three. I move the Allegheny County Board of Education appoint Dr. Suzanne Mello Erwin as a member of the Board of Education pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 115(c-37.1B).
I move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Steve, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I open up the floor for any public comments. Okay, I need a motion for approval of the agenda this evening.
I move.
Aye.
All those in favor say aye.
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 And I need an approval of the minutes for June 29, 2021, and August 3, 2021.
I move.
Second?
All those in favor say aye.
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 And Mr. Beasley?
All right, thank you.
Dr. Beasley.
There you go. That's hard to get used to. Well, let me first of all say thank you, Dr. Erwin, for allowing us to have your services again.
My pleasure, thank you.
It's a pleasure to have you, and you know, as always, my door is always open, phone is always available, so if you ever need anything, but we do appreciate you stepping in for Mr. Carpenter, who has moved out of the county, and just want to thank you for your service, so.
Thank you. Well, let me just say one thing.
You go right ahead.
I have watched this, you know, since I left the board, and you all have handled yourselves with grace and respect, and in times when you didn't expect that this was going to happen to you, but your school system has been admirable, and I thank you for this board and what you have done, and it's my pleasure to come and be of service in any way I can.
Thank you so much.
We're happy to have you here.
So I'll start off with number one here. We've got a new recreation director here in the county, Mr. Cole Edwards, and Cole's got some new ideas about some things that he's doing, and I've asked Cole to come and speak to the board tonight, but some of his ideas for the recreation over there. Cole, I'll turn it over. If you want to go up to the podium, you can, or you can wherever you feel comfortable. We appreciate you being here, Dr. Erwin.
Thanks, Cole Edwards, Allegheny Parks and Recreation Director. I was invited just to discuss, I guess, the future of parks and recreation, and really looking for support from you guys. When I was younger, it was high school kids involved in coaching our youth sports, whether it was basketball or baseball, football, whatever it was. Mainly, back then, it was baseball and basketball. Really didn't have a good youth sports program back then. I'm looking to kind of move in that same direction. I think if we get our varsity players involved in the youth sports programs, they're going to be teaching what they've learned, and then our youth is going to be learning the exact same thing all the way up until they get to high school, making them better players at the high school level. It also prevents, for instance, just started soccer, it's starting up this Saturday, and heavily relying on parents of kids. That's what I want to get away from. There's a lot of parents that are more than willing to volunteer their time, and I'm grateful for that, but a lot of them don't know a thing about soccer. I will say, so far, I've had great support from your staff. I've got two young ladies that have volunteered to officiate every other Saturday from the varsity team, and I've had one young man from the boys' varsity team that has volunteered to coach my 10 and 12-year-old team, and I thought that that was the better fit, being that that was the older group and needs a little more guidance to be competitive. So really, I'm just looking for a show of support moving forward in that direction. I've had discussions briefly with your athletic director and with some of the other coaches, and they're on board. They're willing to get their players more involved. I think just as a community, we would benefit a lot more from that. In that same mindset, I have ideas with different parts of mine, just for example, Lions Club. Used to, and I know you all still do community support, whether it's building trailers with your ag classes and that kind of thing for local farmers, I would look for the same support in our parks. For example, Lions Club would be building benches, replacing some of the rock that has decayed on the rock walls, the fire pit, just things of that nature, to where the kids could be a part of that. I could provide the materials, and they get a learning experience from it, but then it's then taken part in a park that's in their community. So to me, it just builds community more so than anything. And of course, I benefit from it. The county benefits from it, and the kids benefit from it as well. But really, that's really all I had on my plate. Anybody have any questions?
I just like that you're involving the kids in the high school because that gives them something to do. It gives them leadership roles, and I think that's great. And you know, as far as coaching, we have some really good players up there that this could lead them in a direction of maybe I want to do this later, or go into teaching or coaching, so I like that idea.
I think it would also in turn just make them better players as well, because they're turning around teaching what they've learned, and so they're retaining it a little more. And then with Beta Club students, I know that they need volunteer hours and stuff, so you know, that could be a check mark as well.
That's true.
Anybody else?
I think it sounds like a really good idea.
Good. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Cole, we appreciate you coming.
We can use our, that'd be good for our ag and some of those classes, the carpentry.
So the fact is, just if you got projects that you know, you got to let them know early in the semester.
Yeah.
Because they get filled up fairly quick, but you know, it's a great opportunity for our students to do that, so.
Good.
Yeah, it's a good first. Thank you. I'm going to call on Ms. Cindy Horer. We've got a little bit of a budget put together, capital and local. Not approving anything tonight, but we'll have a resolution. We just want to get it in your hands. There is no state budget as of today, and hopefully there, we're hoping there's going to be one by the end of September, but I doubt it very seriously, so. But anyway, I'm going to just let Cindy briefly talk about a few things.
Two things you have. The first is several pages is the proposed adoption of 2122 for the current expense budget, and the very last page is just a one pager, is the proposed capital outlay budget for 2122. And as Dr. Beasley said, that's hard to say, also, I'm not used to that. As he said, we're not expecting a vote tonight at the October meeting. We'll have a full narrative budget resolution that will cover the budget for all of the funds. Hopefully, we'll know more about state and federal funds as well by that time. Their federal funds are delayed also because most of them have to be submitted and a consolidative application, but the information comes in all at different times, so I wish they would change that to where they would approve them as a given, but that's not the way things are working right now. So by October, we should have a better idea on where we stand with our federal monies and with the state monies, and we'll have all of those and all of our other funds as well in a narrative. But the local current expense budget and capital outlay budgets, those are the ones that the county funds, and those are the two that we really have the most discretion over, because the state pretty much tells you how to spend the money. They give you the federal government, so these are the two that we can have the most leave right now. And we just want to give you a few weeks to look at that before voting.
If you have, if you have questions on it, concerns, please call, call me, call Mr. Carter. We'll be happy to answer your questions on it, you know. But we did want to get it in your hands. It is, it is a lot to look at, and but if you, like I said, if you have questions, you got concerns, you don't understand something about it, call myself, call Cindy, Scott, we'll be glad to help you on it. But we just, like I said, we're going to get it in your hands, get ready for a vote next month, and hopefully we'll have a state budget by then, but I really, I don't know that we will.
One question on this Glade Creek Ponty Creek wells, 15,000. Is that the testing? What's 15,000?
It's, so at Glade, you know where, do you know where the well is at Glade?
Yep.
All right. So the pump on it, we've had to replace it twice already.
Okay.
Okay? And so we just, it's more of a contingency fund in there in case it goes out, so we can, so we can have it and don't have to scramble around trying to find that money for that funds.
And that's a deep well, isn't it?
Oh, it's about 500 feet, yeah.
Yeah, it takes them all day to pull it, you know, and get it back. It's a...
Yeah, I actually cut the trees out, so they can do that the last time.
Yeah, we did, yeah. I mean, it's, so that's what that's there for, you know. We just, it's one of those things, kind of like the HVAC change outs. We put it in there, so we'll have it. If we don't spend it, we carry it over, you know, so.
That's what I was going to ask you about was that, because does that, is that covered for, we're doing that now?
Okay, the HVAC change outs?
Yeah.
All right, so the HVAC change outs are what we run into the year. That doesn't include what we're doing with Snyder Electric.
Okay, that's what I, okay, that's what I'm asking.
Anything, anything that's 20 years or older.
Okay, okay.
It's what Snyder's replacing.
Okay.
This is just in case we have a unit go down.
Okay, okay.
Okay?
Okay, that makes sense. That was...
And we've actually had, how many, we've had four units go down already that we've had to replace this year, so, yeah.
About 8,000 feet.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Just this year?
Just this year, yeah.
That's about what the well pump was too.
Yeah, the well pump was like, it was around, it was around eight or $10,000, so, because in there, just in case either one of them goes out, so.
And those, if we don't spend those, we don't, we don't lose that money. It rolls, it rolls into, I say fund balance, but not fund balance, that we maintain. The county maintains totals of what we don't spend, and in addition to the new money that they grant us each year from the sales tax, we get also put back in our budget what we have not spent out of the prior year's cap rate, so. So we don't, we don't lose, it's not like the state funding, if you don't spend it by the end of June, they get most of it back, it's nothing like that.
Any other questions that jumps out at you before we move on? Like I said, just, you know, take some time over the next couple of weeks and look at it, and if you have questions, just don't hesitate to call myself or Cindy or Scott, either one, so.
Who's the athletic trainer now? Is it still?
It's two Baptist.
It's who?
Baptist.
I'm sorry, I'm kidding.
It's two Baptist hospital, yeah. Yeah, it's the same one we had last year.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doctor, that's not the career coach. That's, this is the career coach through Wilt's Community College. That's different.
Now, this is, this is the athletic director that works with our athletic teams, so.
Right, but we do have one. We have a career coach here in...
Yes, that's through Wilt's Community College, yes. And then we also have a partner with Appalachian State that, that we have to, we don't have to pay for that, but...
We just make a match on athletic trainer, right?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. Love them.
Okay. You there? All right, thank you, thank you, Cindy. Number three, new high school. So I've been talking, and we've been talking about a new high school, and I think it's time. The high school up here is over 50 years old, and we still have damage from the earthquake. It's not that we can't use the high school, but there's lots of things that could really be improved. And when I presented the budget with the commissioners, they asked me about what, getting some plans together, and I talked about doing some drawings, some sketches, some 3D drawings, not actual blueprints, but some, some artist drawings, kind of like we have for the auditorium. And so I was going last month to the commissioners' meeting, but it got canceled, and so I've been rescheduled for October the 4th. So I'm going to request between 15,000 and 20,000 dollars from them to get some drawings done, but I went ahead and put it on our capital funding sheet too, just in case they don't give me the funds, or if they give me a part of the funds, and maybe we can match the other part. So I did talk with our architect that we've used up here in the past, Pennup Architect. It's nothing we have to put out for bid right now, but I talked to Mr. Baker. We came up, we drove around, we looked around, and he's got some ideas, but to get some sketches done, it has to be surveyed. We're looking at a cost between, probably between 15,000 and 20,000 dollars to do that, and so he said all he needed was the word to do that, so I'm, I'd like to go ahead and get started on that. I just think it's time. It's not a quick turnaround, so. And also with the state budget this year, there was an opportunity for some grants. There's, there's opportunities for $40 million for a new high school. We can't build a new high school for $40 million, but if we can get a $40 million grant from, from the state, and then we can get the rest of the money from the commissioners, we could do what we need to do, so, just...
Are you thinking same side?
Yes, yes. Yeah, it's...
How would you, how would they go, I mean, have you thought about it enough to think to help that?
Randy said, you know, it's really starting right here in this parking lot. I don't know what it would look like, but you know, you start there, complete that.
You're talking about over on the baseball field, right?
Nah, I don't want to go, I only leave the athletic fields. I just want to upgrade the athletic fields, is what we want to do, okay? I want to, like the CTE, building the ag building, all that back there. When we get the school, this part built, we'll take it down and build a new Career Technical Education Center, and if we are in the process of changing and updating to some electrical areas, or the plumbing, or masonry, expand that. We've got, we've got, we've got a great opportunity, especially with CTE right now, to do some, some things. You know, he saw that, he didn't know, he didn't know there's swimming pool up there, and I know it's not ours, but he's like, he said, we could put in an aquatic center where you could have an indoor pool, you know, or fix it where it's indoor-outdoor pool for the students, and have swim team, and you know, that's just, it's really about planning, and then start getting feedback from teachers, getting feedback from parents, getting feedback from students, getting feedback from the community, and building a facility that's, that's really wraps around the whole community and all the students of this county, and a way we can serve them, you know. A new, you know, a media center, and it's really not, we don't have media centers anymore, we're really technology centers, and so, I mean, it's just, there's lots of ideas, but it's going to cost us a little money just to get some ideas and look at it.
I think, really, the grant, I think we need to go ahead. I mean, there's not any chance that we won't get, we'll have a $40 million grant. If we don't have the drawings and stuff in place or in hand, that puts us to stake.
Well, if, if that, if those, if those grants go through, which they should, you're going to have a short window to go after it, you know.
I agree.
So if you've got, if you've got the things in place to look at, it would be a whole lot easier to get those grants.
I agree.
And I, and I'm...
So you're assuming the grant dropped down, though?
They're not, yeah, they're in, it's in the budget. It's in the state budget. It's in the state budget, yeah.
So do you need us to vote on the beginning of the process? Is that what you need?
Yeah, I'd like to, and that, and then, like I said, I'm going to go to the commissioners and seek some funds from them to help us with it. But also, also, I want to, I want to keep on this auditorium too. We've got to do something with the auditorium, one way or the other.
Go through one way?
The auditorium?
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, we've, we've got the drawings for that, we've got the plans for that. We just need the okay from the commissioners to fund it too, so maybe something we can put together, you know, with this grant, and then there's also, there's, there's Q's ad money still available that we could go after too. But you know, all that has to run through the commissioner, so it's just, we're going to have to start having some meetings with the commissioners as well, as a, and when we start, start having some joint meetings, so. But yeah, I'd like...
I agree.
I'd like permission to get ready to roll on this, to be honest with you, if that's...
Yeah, I'll make them up, I'll roll them up, as long as we go to the commissioners and ask for some funding too.
Well, I'm on the agenda October the 4th, so anybody that would like to join me there, I'd be glad to have you there with me.
And what time is that?
Okay?
That'll work.
Starts at 6 o'clock.
Yeah. I'm late.
You don't have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, very good. Thank you, thank you. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Carter. He's going to give us a little Snyder Electric update and some COVID updates.
Okay, good evening. I'll start with the construction. That's at the bottom. We're pretty caught up right now. This is from Snyder Electric. They've completed 95% of all the construction, the light installation, HVAC, the remotes, the controls. All that stuff is good to go. The next thing will be sending out bids for the HVAC at Sparta for the gym, and then HVAC for the high school. And those are through our Esther Funding that we did with the, the change out orders and the add-ons. The next thing, any questions on the line? Do you notice how much brighter it is in here?
Yeah, I can notice that.
So the next thing, the week five COVID update, all right. We got it, we got it, you can see it by school, by location, by positive, by quarantine, and by that last number there, total absent, that's how many students are absent due to being quarantined, isolated, or just being absent because they're sick and not feeling well. So if you look right now, we've got 35 positive students or staff members in the school, and that number's up just a little bit. Ms. Miller called me after about 5 o'clock and had a few more this afternoon. And if you see at the bottom, if you look on App Health, it shows that there's 35 in Allegheny County, and you can see that we've got more than that in our school system. So the way that, to make sense of that is, our nurses are doing a great job, and our administrators are doing a great job of documentation and getting documentation from the students or staff members that show that they are positive or that they are quarantined, by the health department or by their provider, okay? And we get that within a day or so.
Yeah, but App Health not shows everybody's test. It just shows what their test.
App Health will not get information from Elkin, or Galax, or Ash County, and may not ever get it if it's from a private provider of that positive test, so.
So it number really accurate?
So our numbers for us are extremely accurate.
Are they?
Our numbers are accurate, up to date, yes, as of this afternoon. So I just didn't want you to be alarmed when you see 35 in Allegheny County and we got 35 in the school system.
Yeah, yeah.
Whereas like I said, that's, that's our numbers. We get them, we know that that's, but otherwise, it's so far behind. Like I said, if somebody goes and tests in Galax, that don't get back to Allegheny County, even though that person may come back here, they may go to school here, they may work here, and it may eventually get there, but it's not going to be up to date.
So really, look, I mean, we go to App Health, we just really don't even...
You're, you're pretty much getting what runs straight through then, yeah.
And that's it?
Yeah, that's all you're getting, that's all you're getting from that weekly update they send out.
Wow, yeah.
Now, some of our students or staff may be part of that 35, but we don't know that.
We don't know?
We don't know that.
Okay.
Like I said, all we know is the 35, but it's actually 37 that we have right now that are, that are positive.
Out of the, out of that 70, there may be some that are, that we've listed and some that App Health listed, but I, I'm saying, I'm saying, if you look at it over the county, it's at least over, it's at least over 50.
Yeah, because, see, as a citizen, being here, I'm looking at it going, oh, well, that's, that's not too bad.
Yeah.
So really, it's kind of a false thing we're living on.
It's just, it's hard to beat up to date, because they're counting other different people.
Yeah, yeah.
And different doctors' offices and, and citizens reporting.
Yeah, so if I go to Elkin, do, they don't have to report it back to Allegheny even though I...
Yeah, I think there's a process, but I...
They, they ask you to, but you're not required to.
So they probably don't...
Even, even private providers, if you go to your own personal doctor, they've asked that they send it to the health department, and they may, but it may take, it may take three, four, five days before they send it, so.
If they do.
If they even do send it, yes, yeah.
And then you have a lot of people that are doing home tests now.
Well, I was, yeah, I was going to ask that.
And that's one thing, we, we do not take home tests.
Okay.
Simply because there's no documentation of who took it, when they took it, what day they took it. So if they test positive, we just try to refer them to go get a, get a, a test at their provider or at a, at the health department. And then moving on across, you see the quarantine numbers. So we have a total of 100. Last, when we, when we closed school for the Thursday, Friday, we had 120 kids absent at Sparta and 110 at the high school. And you see, the high school only has 17 students quarantined right now. We had two teams in the last week that, if it had been earlier in the year, we would have had a quarantine, big numbers. Yeah, the whole team, for example, our, our coaches are doing a good job of keeping those kids masked in locker rooms and so forth, because those are situations where, where we run into it in athletics. So we've had a couple times where we quarantined tubes to the 25th third. So the numbers were better earlier this morning. Sparta Elementary had a, had a rough day today, but overall, they're, they're getting back on the quarantine side in the right direction.
I will say, the mask could help with the quarantines.
Yes.
I think they'll continue to, to keep dropping, so.
Yeah, because, you know, when we have a student test positive in class, you ask the teacher, everybody, and mask them, yes, and we take that kid out real long. There's no, no further questions.
I still like keep addressing it as we go along. I mean, I'm not ready to wipe the mask, but I still like keep looking at and addressing it.
Well, you've got, you've got to vote on it every 30 days now, so.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm good, I'm good with that.
Okay, okay. But we've got that listed down in new business, so we'll, we'll get that, but...
All right, any questions?
I have a question.
I'll get you a coffee.
I do have a question, and someone asked me, and I remember us discussing it, but you can re-explain this answer.
Put me on the spot.
No pressure. The PCR test, what test do you, like, when somebody has to test to come back, are you accepting only not the PCR, or what kind of test?
Yeah, if, if someone's quarantined and they test, the PCR is, is what we need.
The PCR is what we need.
And usually what happens is, they, if they go to the health department, they'll test them with the rapid, they'll take the PCR and send it off. If the rapid's positive, then, then we know and we proceed from there. and we proceed from there. If the rapid is negative and they have symptoms, then it's usually a day or two later, we get the PCR to get a true result. But the PCR is the true result we need if someone's tested.
So we have students. We need to make sure that they know that when they go get tested.
Right.
Right. And that's what the nurses and when they call in quarantine and they explain the situations, they're trying to let them know.
About the PCR test, okay.
There's a small window in that sheet we went over last time. There's a... The problem with the rapid is it's a small amount of time. If they test on day five or day seven, then the rapid is reliable. Where we have troubles, people testing all outside of that window. I mean, and really, to go to get it, get back, the 10 days with no symptoms is what most people are dealing with. You know, the three options we had?
Yes.
Testing the five, seven day window, coming back day eight with a negative test, or 10 days quarantine with no symptoms. And then they sign that they have no symptoms. That's where most of them are falling. Just because according to when, if it's on a weekend, you can't test. You know, if your five to seven days falls Friday, Saturday, Sunday, then I think they're testing Monday through Thursday now.
Right.
So, you know, sometimes it's hard for them to get one in that length of time.
So if somebody has a negative rapid test, not the PCR test, do you wait till you get the PCR back? As someone asked. And I just wanted, I know that it was like that last year. I just wanted to make sure that we were still on that same page.
Yes.
But if they were in that five to seven day period and tested with the rapid negative, they still have to have the...
Well, they should get it back. And if they don't have any symptoms, and like I said, our nurses walk through this with the health department and make sure those windows and those things match up and which test is reliable. But if it's just symptoms and a test, then we gotta have the PCR.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. While Mr. Carter's standing up, there's a couple of things we want to talk about. Just, we had a board meeting this morning. But COVID also is having a dramatic effect on employees, not just hours, but across the state. So I've got some results I want to kind of share with you because we've got a little issue we need to talk about tonight too. But, you know, there's 115 districts. And out of the 105 districts right now, there's 2,600 teacher vacancies across the state. There are 3,400 residency teachers teaching, which means we have 3,400 teachers across the state that are teaching with a residency license, which means they may have...
Or a permit to teach.
Or a permit to teach, yeah. Or emergency licensed teacher. There's 1,300 bus driver jobs available across the state of North Carolina right now. There's over 280 nursing, counseling, and psychologist positions available. K-5, there's over 1,000 teachers shortage across the state. There's just, everybody, it's not just us. It's across the state. And we're having a little problem right now with custodians, child nutrition, and we're looking for another nurse, but we think we found that. Bus drivers. And we've got some child nutrition right now who are positive and will have some of them quarantined. So we need to have a remote day this Friday. Just tell you that right now. Gives us a chance because we're not gonna be able to feed them if we don't because we're gonna run out of folks. You know, and you can't just throw a TA in there and say, I need y'all to help serve food or I need you to help prepare food. If they're not trained, they don't know how to do it. And then, also, we don't have enough folks to help get cleaned up because we're short custodians because of the same issue. So they would really, we really need a good cleaning day Friday, just as special to child nutrition. So I'm recommending while we're sitting here right now discussing this, that we have a remote day this Friday. If you've got questions or if we need to take a motion on it, if you're gonna vote on it, but it would really help us get some quarantines back for next week if we could do a remote day Friday.
So is it a...
Oh, you're just talking about this Friday?
Yes, sir.
Because I was gonna ask, is it possible we do that on Fridays for a while until we get...
Right. So the new calendar law finally was passed. The new bill was passed. And since we have a weather waiver, we get 15 remote days this year, okay?
Right.
All right. So we could do it for a while, but we're also gonna have some weather too. So I don't wanna use a lot of them.
Right, right.
Just in case, but...
It's the case right now where two...
Can we do it for a month? Every Friday?
I mean, I don't care, but I don't wanna use all the...
Well, like you said, and if it's needed. I mean, they come...
That's gonna be my question. Do you need to do it every Friday? I don't know the Friday.
I don't know. I mean, it's kind of a week by week thing right now.
Right now, that's where it's hitting us.
Yeah, because I wish we could do it because when we did it last year and we took our Fridays, I felt like they were able to clean really good and...
Well, that's what, you know, like I said, we've got two here at the central office that's been going since basically the start of school and filling in. And that's Sandy Collins in Carrick. And I mean, they're, we've got 22 and we're down to 15.
Here's a question. Can we address it weekly?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, that's a promise, yes.
Absolutely.
Would that probably be the way to do it? Say this week, we're gonna have to have a day to catch up with the people.
Yeah.
Next week, we're gonna go all week. And this week, yes.
And I also found out this morning, the school system out of Guilford County, they're actually using fast food companies. They set up, no, I'm seriously.
I'm not lying, but the kids would be like, oh, I'm on that.
But they're using Subway. They're using Pizza Hut, you know, and they're fixing food that follows the nutritional guidelines. But that's how short they are of child nutrition folks. And then, there's some systems who are losing child nutrition folks who are going to work at the fast food places because they're starting to pay $18, $20 an hour. Okay?
What's how to address it every Monday and every week?
I'm good with that, if that's okay?
Yeah.
And we may not know on Monday. It may be...
Yeah, like today, like I said, they came in and their people, their people's beat down.
Yeah.
She said...
I wanna give the parents, the parents as much notice as possible.
Yeah. That's what she asked. She asked like, can we, you know, would it be possible for the rest of the week? And I was like, eh, we gotta give a little notice. I know we need, you know, you need some time and they're taking their stuff home.
How does your Wednesday?
Do what?
As long as we dress it by Tuesday or Wednesday, we should be good after the parents a couple of days' notice.
Yeah.
Tuesday after and... We could do Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, but we can also, when we do it, is say, this may be, this is a weekly thing we're gonna be working with. It may be Fridays. So the parents know that maybe this Friday, we might have to do a remote.
Yeah, and next week, it might be custodians. It might be teachers.
Yeah. So they know ahead of time so they're not like, oh.
I want them to do what we told them.
Yeah. And, you know, and we...
This Friday, remote? And then, address it weekly. I made a motion.
You don't have a second?
What was this motion? I couldn't understand it.
Have a remote day Friday?
A remote day Friday and we'll address it weekly.
Yeah.
Okay. Second?
If we need.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Okay. My thought is you're gonna start playing.
All right.
But if y'all need me, we gotta do it.
Okay. Thanks, Jason.
It's a thank you.
And like, when we close Sparta and the high school, we don't, those are not counted as a system-wide shutdown for remote. So we still have, that doesn't count against our remote days. It's just if we shut down the whole system like we'll do this Friday. And all I have to do, I just fill out reports, send it to DPI, and they keep up with it. But it's, that's what's happening to everybody. It's a staffing issue, so.
So we could do three schools. I mean, like, if we had to, we could do...
Yeah, we talked about keeping three schools open and...
Rotating them around.
Rotating the food services around.
That's another option that we've looked at. She said, right now, they're a little thin to do that.
Okay.
But the problem is right now, we're just, we don't have enough people to keep food out there to get them through, get them fed, get them their 20 minute seat time, get it done. And like I said, we did talk about that very thing. If we have to, if we've got, take our school maybe with the highest numbers and remove it a day or two and use those cafeteria staff members somewhere else. Thank you.
All right. We've got a fundraising opportunity I'd like to talk to you about. I talked with Terry Greer, former superintendent. And it's kind of like, it's kind of like a GoFundMe account, but I think it's better, to be honest with you. And I'm gonna get Sharon to pull up a website of one of the schools. Basically, it's fine there, Sharon. I presented it to the principals. It's really revolves around the high school. But I think we could do it at all four schools if we needed to or if you like this idea. But I'm gonna let Sharon get it pulled up there first. Yeah, there we go. So what it is, it's kind of like a donors' juice opportunity. And so, they, on these schools' websites, they have an alumni association. So the graduates of the schools are set up on alumni association. So this is a school, this is a school in Texas. And so, if you wanna donate to the school, you know, we're always needing fundraisers. We're always needing to raise money. But you can go on the website, go ahead and donate now. So it's on set up to 25, 50, 100, 250. And every how much money you donate, okay? This one was to be a $25 donation. And you can set up a tip. The tip helps pay for this site, for this company. So if you wanna donate $25, you're gonna donate $100. That $100 you donate goes to the school, okay? The tip helps fund them. And you don't even have to do a tip. They're not, it's just something that they ask for. There's always a transfer fee though because you have to go through your banking information. But so you can do a tip from zero up to 100%. You don't have to. But hit continue there, Sharon. And everything's secure. It's just like PayPal. It's just like Venmo. Is it going through? Yeah, there it goes. And you just put in your donor information, the year you graduated, if you graduated from the high school, email address, cell phone number, and it just keeps a running total of that. And so, you know, they'll yearly send out stuff about the alumni information. Yeah, you can do it monthly. You can do a one-time donation. You do it either way. Go back to the home site there, Sharon, if you would. So if you can scroll down. So they've gotta set it up around some things like athletics, speech and drama, the dance team, the band, you know. It can serve a purpose for any, anything you have at the school. So if you pull up on athletics and hit donate now. So this school, that's another one, I'm sorry. But this school needed a scoreboard for the football field, all right? And so, so far, they have raised already $13,000 for like a $30,000 scoreboard, you know. And those funds just keep coming in. Yeah, there's, that's the other one, isn't it, Sharon? So they built this new football field, needed a scoreboard. And so, they've called on the alumni to help pay for it, you know, just kind of like we do now. And, you know, a lot of times, you get parents who like, instead of sending me fees and I pay fees, can I just give you $25 check? Perfect opportunity for that. And you can put the funds towards any, anything that you're doing a fundraiser for. And I don't know, I just think it's a good idea. The principals really liked it.
Would this replace the kids being sent home with those brochures? Would this take the place of that?
Yes, we could do that.
I'm 100%.
Yeah.
We could do that.
It's just on the beef jerky sticks.
I'd really like one too.
Yeah, and that's it. That's it. And so, but, you know, right now, it's a new company that Terry and his partner started. But they just got it set up for high school now because it's alumni day. And I told him, I said, we'd like to, we'd like to maybe pile at our K-8 schools and see how it worked. And so, it's about building a base and about who attended school there. And, you know, I know the support that's given at Piney Creek and Glade and Sparta. I think the parents would really support and the community would support needs like this. And so, I don't know, I just, I think it's a good idea. I'd like to try it. But, you know, any fundraiser has to be board approved. But I wanted to show this to you before we...
Bob, we'd be a good article in the paper supporting this thing and get it out in the papers so that people can read about it.
I don't think he heard you. And Bob's taking it all in.
Yeah. But, I mean, you think this is something...
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, I, yeah, I, I think as a parent, I, I'd rather.
Yeah.
It's easy and it's quick and.
It is, it is, you know.
Yeah.
And if, if it's not successful, we can scrap it, you know, but I'd like to try it and see what happens, you know.
Do you have a motion?
I have to make a motion.
For second? All those in favor say aye.
Very good, thank you, thank you, thank you. One last thing I have, so, you know, vaccinations for students in kindergarten, seventh grade, twelfth grade. You have a deadline of September the fifteenth, which is tomorrow.
Of what, deadline for what?
For them to be, have all their vaccinations.
Not COVID vaccine, but.
No, no, yeah.
The regular one.
Regular, the regular, the regular vaccines are, that are mandated, general statute have been in place for years and years ago. We've got a little issue though. Our seventh graders cannot get their meningitis vaccine right now, because there's none available. And our seventeen-year-old and seniors can't get it because there's none available. So Sharon called around today, Athel is supposed to get theirs, is theirs the twenty-second, September twenty-second? And, and some other local providers are supposed to get their vaccines into the twenty-fourth, so I'm going to extend the deadline of students getting their vaccines until the twenty-fourth right now. And we, I may go a little bit longer, I talked to Fred about this, we can do that because there is no vaccine available, but, you know, they're required now in the seventh grade to have their first meningitis vaccination, and it used to be, when you graduated before you went to college, you had to have your second booster for your meningitis, now it's required when you turn seventeen, or you're a senior in the high school. And so I just want, I just want to let you know I'm extending the date.
And just because I've not been paying attention, why, why are they not available?
Don't know, I guess because they're making so much of the COVID vaccine right now, I really don't know. I know, but I can give you an answer on that, but just, I just know.
They're not there.
I just know it's not there, yeah.
But, but do you think we can have them by?
Yeah, they've ordered them, and they say they were going to have them in hand by the twenty-second or twenty-fourth, so I think we need to give them, I think we need to give them a little time to get.
Yeah, yeah.
There and, and, and get vaccinated, so I'm just, I'm just going to extend that, that date a little bit, but we'll send that information out through the nurses, they send out letters. And, but we may, I'm, we'll put, we can put a connected out call for, for that, to let, let parents know that we're extending that date of the vaccination. Now, the other ones though, September fifteenth, the deadline tomorrow, is, is the deadline on that, so.
Do you need a motion on that?
No, I do not.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, and that's all I have, my report, bad, Sharon, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. New business, we need to vote on face coverings. And I need the Allegheny County Board of, Board of Education continue its current policy of requiring face coverings for students and staff in accordance with the recommendations in the current Strong Schools North Carolina Public Health Toolkit, K-12. And that the Board of Education vote at least once each month on whether or not this policy should be modified. Now, we can vote more than once a month.
Yes, you can, you can have a, you can have a call meeting anytime before that thirty-day period and vote, okay? But you are required by law now to vote every thirty days.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'll make a motion.
Sure.
All those in favor say aye. And bus driver proposal.
Okay, so last month, I introduced this, like I said, the, our, our critical areas right now are, are bus drivers and, and cafeteria staff, and we've been working since last year, we sat down Mr. Beasley and Cindy and I, and went through the numbers and, and come up with something that we think, we've got budgeted that we could, we could afford to try to, to try to incentivize our, our bus drivers a little bit, and this is similar to the report I gave you last, last time, we have trimmed the numbers just a little bit, just so we could make sure we could fund it. But we would like to put this into, into play and into motion for our, our bus drivers for this year.
So this is the bonuses?
Yes, this is the bonuses, be paid one time, be paid in their May, or June check at the, at the end of the year, in accordance to how many, how many trips they got in, how, how their attendance was, all those things. And all this is to, like I said, right now, I know we have three staff members that's driving at least once a day, full-time. So we have a couple at Sparta that's driving in the morning to high school, is driving, well, one's high school drives for Sparta in the morning, and we have at Piney Creek right now, we have three buses, we're down to two, and we got one driver. That's, that's another issue we're having. We combined the routes into two, and right now, we're down to one driver, and thanks to Ms. Vassal, Mr. Sturgill, and, and some teachers at the high school covering classes, so we can get people with a license out there to get the kids home in the afternoon. So, and, and this is something, we talked about what Sandy Collins is doing with cafeteria staff, and Mr. Johnson, his staff's doing with bus drivers and the principals, but it, it's a daily, it, it's a daily puzzle to put together to get people to get the kids to school and get them home. And we, we would hope this would help a little bit.
Are any staff, wants any kind of interest in driving buses now?
They don't know it yet, some.
They don't know it.
No, we, like I said, we've got three or four that are doing it.
They're doing it because they're doing it.
Get kids home.
Yeah.
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 Now, I have a question about the attendance part. Does, would that exclude a positive COVID test?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think we would, we would.
I think that would be very fair.
Yeah, I mean, we, we want them here when they're healthy.
Right.
Yeah.
So the COVID positive would not count against their attendance?
No.
For that? Okay, but I would, I wouldn't want that.
Now, this is based on trips, is that a morning trip, and then the evening is another trip, is that two trips a day?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that, if, if, if we have staff, we were driving twice, or somebody come in in the morning, then they ran a route, and then, then that's one. And then, like I said, the, the five hundred dollar bonus, if you, if you got your school bus, if you got your license and you completed thirty from the school system, then you would get the five hundred dollar bonus.
That's a five hundred dollar signing bonus, to go along with the other bonus.
Go along with them.
That's a five hundred dollar signing bonus.
Yeah.
A sign bonus, yeah.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. But we'd, we'd like them.
But that's good, that's after two weeks of driving?
Yes.
Basically.
Basically.
Now, you got, are you going to reimburse anyone who needs the C D L, or are you paying for the medicals too? Do they have to have a medical to drive a bus?
Oh, yeah.
Or you aren't going to pay for that?
And some of them, some of them have to have it more often than others.
Yeah.
If they have any type of.
You're not a worker, you have one every year.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're trying to pay for everything we can to keep them, to keep the bus licenses.
Is there anybody here in the county that does C D L physicals now, or do you got a center in the mountain area?
Uh, where's they're going?
They're going.
Yeah, they're going to that.
And they're giving them this jam.
How much do they charge?
Seven thousand.
Seventy-five thousand.
Seven thousand, mountain area.
Yeah.
Now, Blue Ridge used to do, they had somebody contracted to come in and do the physicals on-site.
Yeah.
I mean, that might be something that, if, if we, if it's worthwhile, I don't know if it's worthwhile or not.
Well, I think we've got twenty, twenty-two full-time drivers.
Well, that's small, we have.
But, but right now, we are, we're sitting quite a bit short of that, that, we're, we're, we really do have some staff members that are stepping up.
Any, any more questions on the bus driver bonuses?
Do we need a?
Yes, can we get a motion?
I make a motion.
All those in favor say aye. Okay, I need a motion to go in the flow station, please.
Fred, you want to do that motion, or me too?
Uh, we need a motion under General Statute, one forty-three, fifteen, eighteen, one eleven, Subsection D one, eight, D and six. Can we incorporate those provisions by reference?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.